Good evening, everyone rise. Hawkins County Commission Session, Commissioner Rick Brewer is out.
Last, Dawson, Commissioner Dawson Fields will lead some prayer.
A lot of people get any prayer requests?
My wife had surgery last week, but she's doing well.
Anybody else? We got a lot of things going on in the country, a lot of things going on everywhere. Much like we can change everything, but we got a lot of nowhere all over, they'll change the start smile, they grow big. So, you know, just keep that in mind, you know, when you think and when you pray, anything gets. Anyway, let's pray. Lord, we ask you to be with us tonight. First of all, we, Lord, we ask you to forgive us our sins. That's the main thing we're asking you to do for us, Lord, just that we're coming humble, Bible naked, forgive us our sins. We ask you, Lord, simple prayer, be with us, be in our hearts, help us to be open minded, Lord, help us to see each other's views. Help us, Lord, just to understand that everybody's got their own pain and to discuss your opinion, it's not somebody else's, it does not matter around. We ask you to be with us, forgive us our sins, and many short term, just keep us on the path of righteousness, Lord, we're gonna be prior.
Amen.
Ask Commissioner Larry Collins, please, in the place. Attention, select, applause, ladies and gentlemen. We'll call a meeting to order, and we ask each and every commissioner to remember to speak into your mics tonight. And anyone from the audience who you recognize to speak, we ask you to come to the podium. Where we can hear and where everything will be recorded.
Chairman, for the record, can we get an acknowledgement of who is participating to be at the Zoom?
For the record, we'd like to acknowledge, for everybody to acknowledge, the Zooms.
They'll have to unmute. Bob Evans?
Yes.
And is Commissioner Houserock on the phone?
Yes.
Any other commissioners? Any other person that needs to be recognized? Commissioner Evans and Commissioner Houserock, visit.
If you'll do the roll call, finish the roll call.
Chairman, we have nineteen commissioners present in the room and two visiting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item on the agenda is a conflict of interest. We'll ask Mr. Phillips to agree to that.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, of those, if you acknowledge you have an indirect conflict of interest, namely Jeff Barrett, do you acknowledge that indirect conflict of interest for all actions and purposes of this need?
Yes, sir, I do.
That a record of fact, Mr. Barrett has done so.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Next item is commendations and recognitions. We have State Representative David Hawke from Greenville here tonight. He is a candidate for U.S. Congress, and we want to recognize him at this time and give him a few minutes just to introduce himself.
Chairman, thank you very much. It's the County Commission, all elected officials in Hawkins County, all of our friends here watching the proceedings. Thank you for the work that you do. I am a candidate for Congress, but more so, I'm here to say I appreciate the work that you do. It's a thankless job in many regards. Obviously, from the size of the room in here, I understand it may be a contentious meeting this evening. I know full well that after serving our state legislature for eighteen years, I've made a lot of votes and it made people mad. But I never get mad at the other person because I know tomorrow I'm gonna need their vote on an issue just as sure as the sun's gonna come up. So, I want to thank you for the work that you do. I want to thank all the interested folks here. This is how democracy happens. This is how good public policy happens by bringing everybody out. I bring you good wishes from the governor. Sometimes that's received well, sometimes not so much, as we're looking at local budgets. I know y'all having challenges, just like the state is trying to get a budget set, but we've done that. Hopefully, at the state level, we've recognized the importance of local governments and put our money where our mouth is and help them fund there. Philosophically, I believe that the federal government should empower states to do what needs to be done. I think states should empower local governments and you all to do the right thing. And to that point, I think you all as local elected officials need to empower citizens to do what's right. Because I'm a small government guy, and I know you all are as well. Thank you once again, Chairman. Talking about the folks on Zoom, I apologize. I've got to go talk to a group of Boy Scouts that are trying to get their Eagle badges, and somehow, some way, they chose me to be their government official to talk to as they're working on their Eagle badges. So, thank you all so much for the work that you're doing. Folks out here, thank you for being here. Thank you.
Next, Jeff Barrett, you have?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is Nathan Mahalik in the audience? Okay, I did have a presentation for Nathan tonight. He's Eagle Scout, and he may have had a conflict with the meeting that Mr. Hawks mentioned. So, we'll try to regroup and get his presentation rescheduled for next month. Thanks.
If he shows up later, we'll come back to that.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Barrett. Is there any other recognitions or commendations here? If not, we'll move on to office reports and committee reports, and I think Commissioner Witt has a report from the Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We, as most of you know, we have been trying to revise the rules of order for the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners. That was put in place in nineteen eighty-two. There's some outdated language, there's some outdated things in there, there's some conflicts. And with the assistance of C Task, they gave me a list of things that we needed to try and include in this. And the assistance of the First Personnel Committee, who have reviewed this draft that I put in front of you. We've reviewed it a couple of different times and made some changes, and they agreed that we need to pass it out to the full commission. At this time, just for review. It says draft on the top of it. I appreciate that you took it with you, did some studying on it. And if you have questions or comments, you can email them to me, and call me, and bring them for the next meeting. But what I'd like to do is, within the next meeting or two, present this as a resolution for passage for the rule of order. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Witt. Commissioner Mads, you have a report from the Budget Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I distracted my comments, so I can expedite this, because I know we've got a full schedule. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to update the commission on where we are with the budget and how your support for last year's budget period. I stated in last year's committee that I wholeheartedly believed in a presented budget, and any negative results can be placed solely on my shoulders as budget chair. Certainly, a team effort. I can even know there's someone waiting when things go wrong. I think any negative repercussions presented by the Budget Committee into this commission. I would never knowingly request your support for a budget that is detrimental to our county. When we need the legislative body, Mr. McCann and office holders and employees of our county openly discuss your concerns. We will always come to a consensus for what is ultimately best for our county. With that said, I want to give a snapshot of where we're going to end the year. This year, made improvements to county assets, moved closer to pay equalizations, continued to cut expenses, turned money back into the general fund, grew our capital projects fund balance, maintained a healthy debt service fund balance, and made strategic planning a priority. What you do is a thankless job, and you realize that. So, quick snapshot, local option sales tax. I know there's a lot of things people have been asking, have been concerned how revenues are panning out with pandemic. Sales revenue through May of this year, this local option sales tax is up slightly over last year's comps, and it looks to continue to trend upwards. Property tax collection, as of a couple of months ago, was up one point five eight percent, about projected collection rate. At this point, fiscal year twenty twenty showed one million eighteen thousand dollars added to the general fund balance. You will end this year in a solid position, but we must make the same controlled approach for the budget we're working on now. And I've had some phone calls about specific issues, and I want to quickly address them. There was will tax, people concerned that they would not be paying their will tax, although it's off slightly. It's probably going to be, it looks like no more than four percent. And a lot of that, I'm sure, as a bright analyst, you could push out for March and April as a June fifteen deadline. However, it may also be new vehicle financing at zero percent. You may see some things at point. Move that upwards, if not in this fiscal year, you may see the bump at first, but next fiscal year. Been told that tax revenues were down, property tax revenues were down by forty percent. Stated earlier, collection rate for the budget for property taxes is up one point five eight percent, so a couple of weeks ago or months ago. But if you assume property taxes were down forty percent, that'd be eleven million dollars. We would be in solid. So, and also that there was no growth in Hawkins County. We're seeing growth in Hawkins County property assessed. Assessments on total assessed values went up by slightly over seven point six million. AEP, I've heard continuously that we're getting four million dollars in additional revenue from AEP. That is not true. The projected amount to the general fund at full completion of the project is five hundred seventy-one thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars in addition to what it was in twenty sixteen. So, it's actually three hundred and one thousand, six hundred more than twenty sixteen, but completion is up five hundred and seventy-one thousand. The cumulative amount collected from AEP is nowhere near a two million dollar increase. And we can't just willy-nilly, as you know, throw funds around. It has to be properly reallocated by County Commission and County Audit, certainly substantiates that with a clean audit. Local option sales tax, we were told that we wouldn't recognize any increases in local option sales tax because the County Commission already had that spent. We're seeing a trend in positive local option sales tax on that due to the pandemic. People spending their money here closer to home. But with that said, also, local option sales tax is actually split fifty percent. Fifty percent by state law goes to Board of Education, the other fifty percent goes to the solid waste fund. So, it doesn't hit the general fund for the local option sales tax. And finally, the statement that there's a big property tax increase coming. As of right now, there is no, that subject has not even been breached for a property tax increase. We're figuring that tax levy to stay at the same of where it was. So, your capital approach to this year's budget has kept your optimal target cash reserve well above one-third of your expenditures. Meaning, whatever you spend, we're keeping a third in cash on hand versus your expenditures. And that's critical to the financial health of the county. For the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one fund budget, your, for a budget cycle, you're actually going to pull seven hundred fifty-two thousand, as of right now, three hundred and seventy-four dollars from fund balance. Keep in mind, there are specific entries with that to be wanted addressed. One's prison board, that's three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars straight off the top of that seven hundred fifty-two thousand. Assessment reduction set aside three hundred thousand dollars in assessed values. You've got about four percent spread for underestimated property tax revenues or an overestimation of expenditures of the responsible safeguard. So, even with draft two, you're at that watermark of a third of your reserves being held for expenditures. So, with that said, I want to let everybody know that on July seventh at eight thirty in the Administration Building, we're going to have our next budget meeting to consider draft two. And also, for next month, one hour prior to the County Commission meeting, the Budget Committee is going to host a meeting for full County Commission. You'll be paid as a committee for attending that, but that is to answer all of your questions, any concerns, if there's something that somebody doesn't fully understand, it makes no sense. We'll get to the bottom of it, we'll get it taken care of. I want you to be just as comfortable this year in your support of this budget as you was last year. That's it. Thank you.
Is any questions about what Commissioner Mads has put up over on the button?
If you're not bored with tears yet.
Commissioner Phillips, if you want to be recognized.
Sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just going to say right quick, since Commissioner Mads, about him talking like he did, maybe think of it, Road Committee Chairman, where I sit at. We've still got a lot of problems in county, from Washington roads, everything else from the rains, everything we had last year, it's past spring. And I know Jeff Bobo is always here and doing a good job of putting it out there, so I just want to be able to tell the public, we are addressing the issues as fast as we can. I don't think we can address them fast enough to get them all fixed, but I will hopefully in the next couple of days try to set another Road Committee Chairman, Road Committee meeting, and it will be published. So, if you see it, if you watch Facebook and you see it, come, come to the meeting, address your problems, say what's on your mind, tell us what roads you're at, because we do not know. And there's probably a lot of roads in the county that nobody has a clue are still tore up, you know, and you may make phone calls numerous of times, felt like you got swept under the road. But keep on them, because we're trying to address them as fast as we can. Thanks.
Any other committee reports? If not, next item on the agenda is approval of last minutes, having to approve. Who made that motion?
Oh, I, I already talked, we need to figure that off. Thank you.
I apologize, I'm not seeing. Motion by Commissioner Fields, second, by Commissioner Thacker, and any discussion on the minutes? If not, everybody vote.
I will need Commissioner Evans and Commissioner Houserock to voice how they would like to vote. We have twenty-one yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a resolutions, twenty twenty zero six zero one, by Commissioner Mads.
To the Honorable Rick Brewer, Chairman, members of Hawkins County Board of Commissioners in regular session met this twenty-second day of June twenty twenty. Resolution in reference to request unclaimed balance of accounts remitted to state treasurer under Unclaimed Property Act. Whereas Tennessee Code annotated section sixty-six dash twenty-nine one oh two and sixty-six twenty-nine one twenty-three is made by Public Chapter four oh one Acts of nineteen eighty-five, provided municipality or county in Tennessee may request payment for the unclaimed balance funds reported and remitted by or on behalf of local government agencies if it exceeds one hundred dollars less proportionate share to the cost of administering the program. And whereas Hawkins County and/or its agencies have remitted unclaimed accounts to the state treasurer in accordance with Uniform Disposition of Unclaimed Property Act, and whereas Hawkins County agrees to meet all the requirements of TCA section sixty-six, twenty-two, one oh one, and others, and to accept liability for future claims against accounts representing the funds paid to it, and to submit an annual report. Claims received on these counts on the state treasury by September one each year, and whereas it is agreed that this local government will retain a sufficient amount to ensure prompt payment of allowed claims without deduction for administrative costs or service charge, and that the balance of funds will be deposited in this local government's general fund. Now therefore, be it resolved, the county legislative body of Hawkins County, the state treasurer, the state treasurer paid unclaimed balance funds to it in accordance with the provisions of TCA section sixty-six twenty-nine one twenty-one. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Mads, second, by Commissioner Witt. Is there any discussion? If not, will everyone please vote?
Commissioner Evans and Commissioner Houserock, have you voted?
Yes. Good.
Thank you.
Mr. Evans, this is next, this resolution is your resolution. Do you wish to read that, or do you want someone here to read that?
My pleasure, Witt, please.
Okay, we'll recognize Commissioner Witt to read twenty twenty zero six zero two.
Honorable Rick Brewer, Chairman, and members of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners in regular session met this twenty-second day of June twenty twenty. Resolution is in reference approval to accept a rural planning initiative, R U P I grant, fiscal year twenty twenty twenty-one from TDOT Long Range Planning Division and the First Tennessee Rural Planning Organization with no local matching funds for Hawkins County. Whereas the TDOT Long Range Planning Division and First Tennessee Development District is making available to local governments a grant for the purpose of helping rural communities identify needs and promote solutions that lead us to, lead to an interconnected community with efficient modes of transportation. The grant funding will be up to twenty-five thousand dollars for Hawkins County, Tennessee, with no local match. One hundred percent of consultant services will be funded by TDOT for communities classified as distressed or at risk, and the project will be administered by the Rural Planning Organization. These grant monies will be used to conduct Hawkins County schools' safety and ADA accessibility study. No funding can be used to support recurring expenditures such as salaries, debt issuance, or existing programming and services. Grant funds for new building construction are not permitted. Therefore, be it resolved that should Hawkins County be awarded a grant, approval is given to accept said grant from TDOT Long Range Planning Division and First Tennessee Rural Planning Organization, First Tennessee Development District for the purpose of conducting a Hawkins County schools' safety and ADA accessibility study. Further, therefore be it resolved that County Mayor Jim Lee is authorized to sign all documents pertaining to this grant. Second, that County Mayor Jim Lee shall appoint a steering committee to participate for the length of this study. And third, that the best of the ability of Hawkins County, the recommendations of the study will be implemented. Mr. Chairman, on behalf of Bob Evans, he so moves.
Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Gibson. Any discussions? Mr. Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Got one question down at the bottom of the page where it references that the recommendations will, for the best of the county's ability, be implemented. Will those recommendations, will they go before the school board and the school board of directors and the school superintendent prior to coming before this law?
Would you like me to address that? I'm here on behalf of the B G G, she applied for grants, and she's on vacation. I'm, I'm, Mr. Barrett.
Yeah, if you would, Sarah.
The committee, or the engineers will come to the committee that Mayor Lee put us and tell the committee what the recommendations are. It's up to the committee to authorize the recommendations that they make. They may just say, you need signs here and something simple there. We're under no obligation to do what they tell us we need to do if it's expensive. But it's just a recommendation to us what we need to do. We might not have any problems, but they will be doing the study at office schools. Mr. Gibson is aware of that.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? If not, will everyone please vote?
We have twenty-one yes.
Next item on the agenda is resolution twenty twenty zero six zero three, and that be recognized, Mr. Keith Gibson.
To the Honorable Rick Brewer, Chairman, members of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners in regular session met this twenty-second day of June twenty twenty. The resolution in reference is a three-year software as a service agreement with Tyler Technologies Incorporated. Whereas Hawkins County Board of Education has approved the attached agreement for GPS and mapping for the Transportation Department, and now requests approval of said agreement by the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners. Therefore, let it be resolved that the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners met in regular session June twenty-two twenty twenty to go on record as passing this resolution. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Gibson, second by Commissioner Witt. Is there any discussion?
The information is all attached to the back of this, quite lengthy also.
Can everyone please vote?
Mr. Evans and Commissioner Houserock. Mr. Evans? Thank you. Twenty-one yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is resolution twenty twenty zero six zero four, and that will be introduced by Commissioner Allen.
To the Honorable Rick Brewer, Chairman, members of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners in regular session met this twenty-second day of June twenty twenty. Resolutions in reference to designate funds received from the governor's local support grant to be used to fund water line extensions in the Carter Valley area.
Resolutions in reference to designate funds received from the governor's local support grant to be used to fund water line extensions in the Carter Valley area near the landfill. Whereas several county residents residing in the area of Grabley Valley, Cobb Road, and Mount Zion Road are in need of potable water. And whereas previous attempts to secure grant funding for shed water line extensions has been unsuccessful. And whereas the attached letter from the Tennessee Department of Health states that a public water supply. Would be the safest option for the residents of that area and would alleviate potential health issues caused by the bacteria, E. coli, and metals levels found in the water samples. Whereas Governor Bill Lee has announced two hundred million dollars in grants will be distributed to every city and county governed across the state of Tennessee for one-time. Expenses in fiscal year twenty twenty-one with each county receiving at least five hundred thousand. Therefore, be it resolved and I won't strike any and all funds and add five hundred thousand dollars to that. I mean, that's my resolution, I think. Therefore, be it resolved. That five hundred thousand dollars from the governor's local support grant be designated to fund water line extension. In the Carter Valley Road area of Grabley Valley, Cobb Road, Mount Zion Road, and Tilton Lane. I won't add that also. Out of Hawkins County. Tilton, yes, sir. Therefore, be it resolved that this resolution is sponsored by Commissioner Danny Alice, Charles Thacker, and Charles Houseright. Therefore, I so move, Mister Chairman.
Now those two. You added two items or you took things to change, Danny?
Yes, yes.
Did you get that, Madam clerk? Okay, motion by Commissioner Roberts. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Thacker. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to recognize Scott President's place.
Let me get my glasses on. First off, I'd like to thank commissioners in my district for their support and their vision and need for what here is a pretty rough situation. If you don't mind, I'll leave. You've got some papers there. Circle one, two, three, and four. I'm gonna start with number one. This is the health report that you got. With the resolution when you got it. I just wanna highlight some things. It is. This water test was done by the state of Tennessee. Funded by a grant. Ken Ray, which has been a great help also. Got this together. I went with the lady from Judy Matters to do the water testing. And we done Grabley Valley and Cobb Road. That is the first phase of this project. Now, down in Tilton Lane is also on it, but that's a very big project. This is what we're talking about is the first phase of the water lines needed. The testing was done on Grabley Valley and Cobb. Samples were tested, like you said, for bacteria, males and radon. Eighty percent of the homes were positive for bacteria in the chloroform group. Six of these were all subpositive for E. coli. Five had a total chloroform concentrations of greater than twenty-four hundred and twenty, which is higher than the instruments can read at the state health department. Fifty-six percent of the households were at or near the draft EPA maximum contaminant level of three hundred. Radon in the household water not only contributes to an increased risk of lung cancer when the water is used inside the home, especially during showering. But it's also associated with the increased risk of gastro and intestinal cancers. When this water is ingested. Detected of aluminum, boron, copper, and lead are concerning. Low levels of lead were detected in seventy-six.
Take a five minute recess.
We've had a gentleman collapse. Yeah, they need to turn the air down a little bit in here. We've had a gentleman who was standing at the back of the room. Collapsed. It was Bill Killen. He's a. Retired fireman who was. Served on the committees with the county commission regarding our. Ambulance situation. They're talking to him. He seems to be conscious. So hopefully nothing too serious. Mister Killen's sitting up now. He seems laughing. He seems like he's okay, so. That's good news. Comes some help from Mister Killen, but he's sitting up. He's laughing. He's smiling. He seems to be okay. It's really hot in here. If you don't know, Bill Killen, he's been a. All of the men in Churchill and he's a member of the county commission's EMS committee that. That made recommendations about the future of ambulance service in the county. And he was standing there in the back of the room. When he collapsed, so. But he's sitting up now. He's been laughing. He seems to be okay. They've got him with some oxygen, so. He's back up. So I think they've got him on a gurney now. They're gonna go ahead and take him out probably. As a precaution. He's taking oxygen right now. Said he's okay. Oh, yeah. You heard it from him. Mister Killen on his way out said he's all right. Just too much hot air, so. He's a tough old guy. Maybe just got a little too hot from Mister Killen. He fell over, but he's okay. Taking him out. Looking him up as a precaution.
Look out, look out back the order. Everybody. You have your team. Here's Scott President. He is going to continue with his presentation.
Fifty-six percent of households were near. That's on radon. Seventy-six percent. Had the traces of lead. That are concerning. It's possible lead levels are higher. All of these tests were taken about noon o'clock in the morning. Took them higher because we took them when they had used the water. A lot of them concentrations. Was a health risk. Her. She sent a call to some of these people and she told four of them to not bathe in their water. Have you live in the house where water's fine, you don't bathe. And she sent me a letter. You have that on the third page of that. It says. I asked her to send this to me. Her recommendation is to clean water source. Page number two is an estimate from C D I Engineering. Jeremy Allen's got that for me. It is. It's pretty cut and simple. So dry, easy. The map's there on the second page. Hit. The estimate is for eight hundred thousand dollars for the project. That is based on. One done in two thousand sixteen and there's a ten percent increase. To get it to the eight hundred thousand number. First Utility District Board on the page number three has agreed to put in two hundred thousand dollars. To help fund this project with their own money. Number four. I went and sat with this. Industrial business close to there. They asked that we keep it as quiet as we could about their input in this. But they've offered to put in a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to do the first part of this project. So there's three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars given by outside sources. We need the five hundred thousand to get these people water. It's your choice. It's up to you guys. Before, as the resolution stated, it's been unsuccessful. We met all the criteria. The other two times we tried, with the exception of density of homes. That's been the problem. There's not enough people. A number guy down, actually Ken Archer's his name, in Nashville over to C D V G. They're looking at numbers and we've never met it. I would appreciate your support to get these people clean water. And healthy water. Thank you.
Is there any discussion? Mister Minz.
Mister Chairman, we're moving on resolutions, spend funds we don't even have yet. These funds aren't even being released until after first of July. And it's been somewhat fluid. I believe as of the other day, the amount Hawkins County is supposed to give is one point one seven six million. So it's gone up by a couple hundred thousand since this first started. That's, I believe, attributed, the increase is attributed to CARES Act. So what I would like to request, as there are some concerns. I don't really know what we're getting into when we're adding a balance sheet private entity as well. But there's several questions to be asked and we don't have that funding just yet. I know we're all definitely supportive of clean drinking water for any and everyone in Hawkins County. One more month of prolongedness wouldn't hurt anything. Therefore, I'll move table, then in a workshop called by the commission chair within the next two weeks to discuss. Not only this, but other projects in favor to the residents of Hawkins County. That could be positively affected by this additional redlining from the governor.
Motion to table by Commissioner Meds. Is there a second?
Second.
That second was by Commissioner Gibson. That cuts out all debate and we will. Yes, Mister Alice, you can redirect since you are the sponsor. You have the last say on that.
Well, if we put this off, it'll be the same thing next month. We're just asking up to five hundred thousand dollars. And if we don't receive that, then we don't go no further. I don't know why we cannot go ahead and prove it tonight. These people are dying with their fellow commissioners. We have finally an opportunity to get a clean source of drinking water in there. And I would hate to prolong it for another month on technicality or what's to be expected. If we don't get the money, then it won't happen. But if we get it, we can go ahead and get this in place and get it completed a month quicker. And I'd ask my fellow commissioners to consider that. Thank you.
Okay, that cuts off discussion. Will everyone please vote on the motion table? Yes will be to table, no will be not table. You're gonna have to wait. I gotta have. Just come in so Bill's gonna have to. Do something.
something.
Yes is to table, no is not, is that correct? Prime Minister Bridwell?
No.
Jesse?
Yes.
Civil Trent?
No.
Jeff Barrett?
No.
Keith Gibson?
Yes.
Tom Kearns?
Yes.
Danny Aldis?
No.
Charles Houserock?
No.
Charles Thacker?
No.
Dawson Fields?
No.
Valerie Goins?
No.
Anna Speaks?
No.
Linda Davis?
No.
Martin Witt?
Yes.
John Metz?
Yes.
Nancy Barker?
Yes.
Larry Cox?
No.
Rick Brewer?
No.
Bob Adens? Commissioner Adens? Commissioner Adens? Yes to table, no to not table?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Harrell?
No.
Mr. Towley?
No.
Yes, fifteen, no?
Thank you, Bill.
Motion to table. Speedy, we're back on the original motion. Commissioner Harrell? Is there any other discussion on the original motion?
Mike, why Mike's office, please?
Mr. Fields?
Scott, if you don't care, what question? Did these outside entities give you any, how long did they give this? Were they gonna back out, we don't do it so long? I mean, that was my hang up on, you know, on May 11th, I just wanted to back out, so do you know that? I mean, you might, I'm not.
I can't answer that. The industry there locally that is closed, I can't answer that. It's highly important that we, and that money's directed straightly to First, straight to First Utility District. They've discussed buying pipe, they've discussed helping them in some way or another to meet a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, that's strictly between them. It's gonna take that money to do this project with, with the two hundred thousand from the board. And I just got all that approval Friday and today. I had approval from the landfill since 2018, and I had it updated this morning, starting last week, I asked for an update, so. I can't honestly answer the question.
That's what goes.
It's all based on approval of the grant funds.
Thank you, sir.
Is there any other, Mr. Metz?
I know which way it's gonna go, but it just concerns me that you got an entity that, by all cases, you have this sale of contaminated water in a certain area, specific area, and we're probably not aware it gets attributed to. They're donating a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for that. And there's, plus this same entity charges this six hundred fifty thousand dollars a year for tipping fees. They're charging the taxpayer of Hawkins County, six hundred forty thousand, six hundred forty-nine thousand in budget this year in tipping fees. Same entity that's gonna give you a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to fight water contamination. And all I'm asking is to wait two weeks, two weeks, that's it. I, I'm for it. I want those people to have clean water. But let's say this, I'll say, you've got this one point one seven six million, you've got the imminent threat CDBG grant that could fund this, and you have CDBG grant that can fund, fund it. A copy, it failed, they presented it twice, it failed, and one of the things that they're doing in this resolution is adding more people to this to help boost the population that might actually get it through in the grant. So why are we going to forego another stab at this grant and just say, well, we got one point seven, one point one seven coming from the state of Tennessee, we're gonna burn that? When we could have accessed additional fund grants and multiplied the impact to the entire county? And you've got fifty-five thousand people in this county, and God knows my heart, I don't want any drinking unclean water. But all I'm asking is for just two weeks, Gary Hicks, I spoke to him, they're working on that CDBG grant for, and another confusing thing is, he's got another one putting in for the radio, it's maybe competing for the same one. I would just like some questions, ask and answer that'll give us clear-cut definitive answers on if we're making the right move. That's all, two weeks is all that I've asked for. And I, if you give two, two weeks, it comes back next month, I promise you, I will go get something else. I'm gonna get, my vote probably gonna go to the minority on this anyway, but that's all I'm asking for, is just two weeks, that's it.
Mr. Metz, we.
Thanks, Paul, Mr. Alves, Mr. Harrell.
Scott, you wanna speak again?
I would like to respond. I guess the very first thing that I said about the contamination was eighty percent, eighty-six, eighty percent was E. coli and bacteria. That's caused by septic systems in low, in spring water, and some of these folks are using spring water. It's, oh, it contaminates shallow wells. One of these homes has a well at a hundred feet, they were told not to bathe in their water. This is not, this is the start, this is just the first phase. I know those monies are available, I understand that more than you guys do. It'll still be available in the future, we'll have to resource those, but until we can get this water charged, it's not gonna happen. Putting it off, in my opinion, is not the thing to do. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Scott.
Any other discussion? If not, does everyone please vote?
Yeah. Commissioner Houserock?
Yes.
Commissioner Adens? Yes. Commissioner Adens?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Barrett?
Sorry.
We have seventeen, yes, four, no?
Motion carriers, next item on the agenda is 2020-06-05, Commissioner Metz.
Honorable Rick Brewer, Chairman and members of Hawkins County Board of Commissioners, making a regular session on the twenty-second day of June 2020, and requiring a two-stage report by the Clerk and Master of Chancery Court, beginning July 1, 2020, and ending June 30, 2026, where the state of Tennessee requires the Central County Council officials, public officials statutory bonds and according to provisions of Title 8, Chapter 19, Tennessee Code annotated, and where a statutory bond for a grant price appointed Clerk and Master of Chancery Board of Hawkins County, Tennessee, in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars in statutory bond for the Clerk and Master as receiver, in the amount of fifty thousand dollars that's required, be approved by county commission and duly signed and reported by the applicable official before being forwarded to the county, Hawkins County Clerk's office, and where is attached a copy of said bond. Now therefore be resolved, a two-statutory bond for the Clerk and Master of Chancery Board of Hawkins County, Tennessee, in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars, and fifty thousand dollars be approved by the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners as required by Tennessee Code annotated. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Metz, second by Commissioner Gibson. Is there any discussion? If not, everyone cast your vote.
Commissioner Adens?
Yes.
Commissioner Houserock? Forty-one, yes.
Motion carriers, next item on the agenda is 2020-06-06, and that will be introduced by Commissioner Civil Martin.
To the Honorable Rick Brewer, Chairman and members of Hawkins County Board of Commissioners, making a session, that is twenty-second day of June 2020. Resolution in reference, approval of renewal of Statute 45, according to the Constitution for Term of Office Beginning 9/26/2020, and 9/28/2021. Whereas the state of Tennessee requires a certain count of public officials, all officials statutory bonds and according to provisions of Title 8, Chapter 19, citizen code annotated, and whereas the following bond, we know, is required to be approved by county commission and duly signed and recorded by the official, official officials, before being filed with the county clerk's access. Upon the June 24, 2019, conscripted, estimated at a portion of the county, ten thousand dollars. Now therefore be resolved that the one-year statutory bond should be officially approved by the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners, as required by Tennessee Code annotated. Renewal period is 9/26/2020, until 9/26/2021. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Trent, second by Commissioner Alves. Is there any discussion? If not, everyone cast your vote.
Commissioner Adens?
Yes.
Commissioner Houserock? Forty-one, yes.
Motion carriers, next item on the agenda is Resolution 2020-06-07, and that will be introduced by Commissioner Davis.
To the Honorable Rick Brewer, Chairman and members of the Hawkins County Board of Commissioners, making a session, that is twenty-second day of June 2020. Resolution in reference, approval to apply for and accept a tourism enhancement grant up to seventy-five thousand from Tennessee Department of Tourism Development, with ten percent local match funds for Hawkins County to upgrade facilities of Laurel Run Park. Whereas the Tennessee Department of Tourism Development is making available a local, to local governments, a grant at the, at the grant was developed to help communities improve the tourism assets and increase tourism-related economic impact. The grant funding will be up to seventy-five thousand dollars for Hawkins County, Tennessee, with a ten percent local match. The grant funds will be used to upgrade facilities of Laurel Run Park in hopes to increase tur- tourism in that area. No funding can be used to support projects that target local community infrastructure with limited tourism-related programming. Any project on private property, marketing, advertising, or billboards, office supplies, or basic operating costs, entertainment, food and beverage, travel expense, medical, accounting, legal fees or salaries, or prizes or prize money, scholarships, awards, plaques, T-shirts, uniforms, certificates, or any other promotional item, eligible projects or sustainable projects that will target local tourism asset infrastructure and planning needs include improvements to existing assets. That the application is due on July the fifteenth, 2020. Therefore be resolved, approval is given to apply for and accept said grant if awarded from the Tennessee Department of Tourism Enhancement in the amount of, in the amount up to seventy-five thousand dollars with a ten percent local match for upgrades to facilities of Laurel Run Park, including further that County Mayor Jim Lee is authorized to sign all documents pertaining to this grant. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Fields. Is there any discussion? If not, cast your vote.
Commissioner Adens? Commissioner Houserock?
Yes.
Forty-one, yes.
Motion carriers, next item on the agenda is 2020-06-08, and that will be introduced by Commissioner Metz.
Mr. Chairman, Resolution in reference, Budget Amendment, General File, Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Metz, second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any discussion? Mr. Barrett?
The question I've got talks about over here on page two, an increase in workers' compensation need to cover additional SROs. Do we currently have school resource officers in all the schools in Hawkins County? Sheriff Lawson, do you know how many do not have a tent?
I think there could be four.
We have two split.
Two split amongst four schools.
Okay, so, so I get, so how many more do we have?
Two, two F D's.
How many more do I have?
Like two more. Okay, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? If not, everyone please cast your vote.
Commissioner Houserock? Commissioner Adens? Forty-one, yes.
Motion carriers, next item on the agenda is 2020-06-09, and that will be introduced by Commissioner Metz.
Mr. Chairman, Resolution in reference, Budget Amendment, Solid Waste File, Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Metz, second by Commissioner Fields. Is there any discussion? If not, everyone please cast your vote.
Commissioner Houserock? Commissioner Adens?
Yes.
Forty-one, yes.
Motion carriers, next item on the agenda is 2020-06-10, and that will be introduced by Commissioner Metz.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make note that you should have received either in the mail or by email an update to this resolution. Further change, it's been proposed, but note, it is now changed to the FOD, increase in overtime and other print benefits, and because of cost of overtime, I would work in connection with drug fund. That was already submitted, just wanna make sure that everybody had received that.
Mr. Chairman, Resolution in reference, Budget Amendment, Drug, Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Metz, second by Commissioner Fields. Got all that, right. Any discussion? If not, everyone cast your vote.
Commissioner Houserock? Commissioner Adens?
Yes.
Forty-one, yes.
Motion carriers, next item on the agenda is 2020-06-11, and that will be introduced by Commissioner Metz.
Mr. Chairman, Resolution in reference, Budget Amendment, General Capital Projects File, Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Metz, second by Commissioner Fields. Is there any discussion? If not, everyone cast your vote.
Commissioner Houserock? Commissioner Adens? Forty-one, yes.
Motion carriers, next item on the agenda is 2020-06-12, and this is a general purpose school fund budget amendment, will be introduced by Commissioner Metz.
Mr. Chairman, before we begin on this resolution, just so we don't- Mr. Chairman, before we begin on this resolution, just so we don't complicate things, I know there's hot budget topics within this amendment concerning the turf for the high schools and I just want to let you know if you shoot this resolution down that it creates significant issues with the Board of Education finalizing their budget to come before the full commission. So, I don't know if we need to kind of heat check this or what, or if you want to move to separate this out. I just don't want to run the risk of this one issue killing this budget amendment. So, I'd like some feedback from the commission.
Mr. Gibson?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to clarify something on this. I've got a lot of bone calls just like a lot of the others and it's dealing on this turf that's putting up number eight. The county commission is not the one that spent the money. The school board are the one, they the one voted to put it in. And I know at the original time, the director mentioned something to me about this. I, I promptly told him, I'm against turf, not. I play a little sports, play a little turf quite a bit and it's hard on me. Now, a lot of people may not have been always opposed, but I have. And, but I am not opposed to doing this because this is the school board money and just like if you have a job, you get your paycheck, you take it home with you, nobody else needs to tell you how to spend your money. If this was new money, it probably would not fly. So, I don't think, I think I would hope that the commission would look at it that way, that this money belongs to the school system and they spend it as they see fit.
Mr. Whit.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to
I guess, we do need to get a second on this. I apologize. Did you second that, Commissioner Gibson? I'm sorry.
Have now.
Well, I'm sorry, I just sent a motion on board.
I just want some feedback from the commission because if you shoot this resolution down, then we've got, we've got a problem. I mean, the greatest, we may have to come back in special session to do that. So, I just like having a close conversation about what your, what your thoughts are. Just open and candid so we can decide if we pull it out or lay it around as it is.
I don't guess we're discussing this, we're just receiving comments. Okay, okay. Mr. Whit.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if I can make this motion at this time, but my preference would be to pull out that fund balance line item thirty-nine zero 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 and make it a separate resolution so we don't get tangled up in the rest of the I mean, we don't know how that one's going to come out, but we certainly don't want to vote down the other one so we, so they can move on to the, to close their books at the end of the year.
The motion is to pull out line item sixty-seven-six one hundred dash seven oh seven building improvement. And line item, pardon, nine thousand.
That's correct.
Ms. Farmer, could you ensure that we're on the right track here?
I'm, I'm not sure if, I mean, I would assume that you all can amend it just like any other resolutions, so.
We, we can't line item, you're, you're approved budget. As far as I know, we can make amendments. I just want to ensure that we don't create more headache or more inspection.
That's why I think we need to pull, pull that item out as a separate resolution. Or amended somehow.
What the, what the the, the motion is and, and that is correct. We don't tell the school board what line item good, what money is. We're just going to vote, take that, pull that out and vote on it separately. And that's for all purposes.
And if it's agreeable with the commission, if it's good by consent, nobody got a problem.
Is any opposition to us pulling that and voting on it two separate? If not, it's approved by consent and Mr. Metz will
So, you don't pay the same thirty-five percent vote?
You, you go ahead and make that motion and then we'll discuss it.
Mr. Chairman, I move for consideration of general purpose. School fund budget amendment sans seven-six one hundred dash seven oh seven and line item thirty-nine thousand. Mr. Chairman, I salute.
Now, that's proving everything except for the
For seventy-six one hundred dash seven oh seven and line items thirty-nine thousand. Naturally, that would affect the end numbers because everybody knows.
Motion is by Commissioner Metz. Is there a second?
Second.
Was that by Commissioner Gibson? Second by Commissioner Gibson. Is there any discussion on that part of the resolution?
We've got several speakers unless we clear those, I'll have them all.
I'm done. I'm done.
Mr. Barrett, do you wish to speak on that part of the resolution?
Well, basically, and I, and I think it's already been covered, but basically that was, my suggestion was to pull the issue on the turf out separate and, and split it off.
Yes. Is there any discussion on that part of the resolution? Okay, does everyone cast your vote?
Mr. Houserock? Yes, just voting, we're voting on resolution twenty twenty oh six twelve, taking out line item where it says number eight, seven-six one hundred seven oh seven. Thank you. Mr. Aitken?
Yes.
Thank you. Twenty-one yes.
Motion carries. Okay, Commissioner Metz, you want to
Mr. Chairman, I move for consideration of then general purpose school fund budget amendment, consideration of account number seven-six one hundred dash seven oh seven building improvements and account number thirty-nine thousand for paying for the unassigned fund balance. Mr. Chairman, I salute.
Motion by Commissioner Metz. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Second by Commissioner Gibson. Okay.
Will I list this resolution since it is pulled out separately, would list this as resolution twenty twenty oh six one-two A?
Yes.
I realize there's a lot of people here that's interested in what we're talking about right now and most everybody here is wanting to say the same thing, so I would like if the people from Volunteer appoint you a spokesperson. And I think Coach Bob's here from Sheriff's here he was. And I'm sure Superintendent Gibson, you may want to speak on it also. So, you know, we'll, we would recognize someone from Volunteer right now that wishes to speak. State your name.
April Hill.
April.
Yes, I talked to Son of his on the phone Thursday, first time I've ever called a commissioner ever. I think the boys, our field is not playable. Our boys will not get to play football this year if the adult tax. We, we will have to travel to away games. Who's going to pay for that? Is the football teams wanting to pay for the buses and all that? It is not fair for our team not to get to play. The band won't get to have shows or anything because they depend on the concession money. They done lost the fun fest. There, it depends on them getting to have concession stands. I have senior boys, please stand up. Is it fair for them to have senior not on their own field?
Stand up.
They, they make their grades. They do what they need to do to play football. My son plays football. His lowest grade is ninety-nine. I can attest for that. We got football players all out in the halls. Soccer players, band members, everybody for this turf. All the community up in Churchill, you know, for the, our students, our, their education is worth it for them. They're our future. You all played on your home schools. When Yens played football, you played. These boys deserve that opportunity as well. Thank you.
Is there any questions for this here, I'm the commissioner? If not, Coach Bob, you still here? I'll let you address the mission, but
You know, I think it's turf is something that's very, very important to most schools. I think it's something that's very needed, put a lot of time into it. A lot of people, Cherokee has put a lot of time into it. Not just me, but it's, you know, today I spent three hours there. It's dead here. You're not supposed to be there, but I was there. The turf, that's something that's more time for my family, more time for our coaches' families and everyone else that puts time into it. There's no opposition on whether Volunteers should get it or not. I think they should. Thought that for four years now. And, you know, we do take a lot of pride and care into our field and, you know, I've had a lot of people just made it that way and I try to continue that and you know, to me, I think it's something that's going to benefit a whole lot of students, a lot more than just football. Looking at both soccer teams, you're looking at baseball and softball in the spring when they get rain out of their field, you're looking at ROTC, PE. Your feeder schools, there are just so many endless opportunities that can be taken care of on that field. And, you know, I think it's something that needs happening on both ends of the town. And, you know, it's, I just look at so many different avenues that can be used. You can bring in teams to have tournaments, whether it's soccer, whether it's seven-on-seven or football. Band competitions and you're not worried about the field being destroyed. The programs, the football programs, the foster clubs, the schools that put a lot of money into it as well, maintain it. And, you know, I think it's a, it's a huge benefit. It's going to reach a lot, a lot more students than you realize. I think it's very important.
Thank you, Coach Bob. Hold on just one second. Mr. Pat, give a place for Coach Bob.
Your responsibility for that field, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And what do you use local students for the maintenance of it, or how do you?
I try not to do that, you know, as far as maintenance of the field for students. We, I mean, when we paint our field for the, when we add that stuff to it for games, yeah, we'll let the kids fill in the lines and stuff like that. As far as, you know, replacing sprinkler heads and fixing irrigation and replacing saw and doing stuff like that. For the most part, that's, that's done by coaches and myself. You know, two years, two years in a row, we put down over two thousand square feet of saw on our field, two summers in a row. And we did use that as a summer workout and had kids help carry pieces of saw and stuff just for that purpose, but without that, those extra hands, we couldn't have done it. And, you know, if there's any issues, usually we try not to ask for a lot of help, we try to take care of it ourselves and just move on and, you know, we're not waiting for a lot of help.
So, how did your field get in such bad shape?
My field is not in bad shape, honestly, but
I understand you're in bad shape. That came from some of your parents.
You're telling the Volunteers or Cherokee?
Yeah, Volunteers.
No, I'm Cherokee.
I'm so sorry.
No, our, our, our field is not in bad shape.
Cherokee is nice.
I mean, I'll try to keep it as much like a golf, looking like a golf course as I can, so.
I'd like to talk to Volunteers, they
They, they, I don't think they're here as far as coaching staff.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to add one more thing. When you were talking about the Volunteers' football field, a lot of people don't remember this, but I was on the, I was on the original staff that started coaching that Volunteer. When they put that field in, there was a huge cavern under that field. They had to fill it in, I forgot how many tons of rock. And that thing keeps settling probably, and that's what causes a lot of the issue on that field. It was, I don't, like I said, I don't remember how much rock they had to put in, but they had to do a whole lot of filling on that field. And it's, it's been a nightmare ever since that field was built, of keeping it in some type of playing condition. So, that's again, just a little more information because, you know, it's one of these things, I was there when, but now it happens. I'm not that old.
Superintendent Gibson, would you like to press?
A couple of things. There's, there's obviously one point two-five, not to exceed one point two-five million is a lot of money. All of the adults in the room, whether they're from Volunteer or Cherokee, would agree that that's a lot of money. It's a lot of burden on the taxpayers. One of our biggest jobs is to make sure we're fiscally solvent, that we're fiscally responsible and that we spend money in a, in a conservative manner. But, along with that, we also have a responsibility to keep kids safe and our staff safe and in this case, it is our, our students who are playing football. Let me address the Volunteer high school field. It has been a long time coming. It is not a coach's fault for the field condition. It's not a staff fault for the staff, for the field condition. As Mr. Gibson stated a couple of minutes ago, he was accurate, this is an ongoing process due to the, due to the sublayers of, under that field. It is believed that the drainage had been collapsed for many years prior to me coming. We did look at that this last year and as I'm reminded every single year, since I moved here, we've had abnormal amounts of rain. Those water issues have destroyed that field. We have dug up those pipes, we have replaced all of those drains with bigger, non-organized metal drains. They are PVC, they're plastic, they're set at the right level, at the right pitch, and they're the right diameter to evacuate the water if we go with turf. If it's approved this evening. If it's not, we will need more time to rectify that situation, but either way, those, those foundational problems have been resolved at, at the Volunteer in the, in the meaning that the, that the drains have been rectified. Back to the money issue. I know this is a big responsibility and I know that it's uncomfortable to, to discuss that amount of money being amended to a current year budget. We're not at July one yet. This is an amendment to the nineteen-twenty budget for the school system. We have already met as a committee, with a committee from both Cherokee's area and Volunteers' area and they are hard at work in, in, in drumming up support, financial support for this project, which would benefit the entire county. It would be my goal to limit or greatly reduce any draw from the local funds if this is approved this evening and that work is already started. I couldn't tell you what we're looking at, but prior to this discussion and this board action about a year ago, we had several vendors pulling up to five hundred thousand dollars ready to sign if the board would have taken action. It is my belief that we're going to see a large amount of this paid for from companies and from industry that support our schools and support our students. I've shared with each of you that RCT program is gaining leaps and bounds and our industry is excited to see our students in the room. A trade-off to that is that they reinvest in the school system so that we can keep the kids engaged, whether it's in sports or other activities. The last thing I want to say is the group that's in this room tonight represents Hawkins County. It's not a Cherokee versus Volunteer issue. One of the biggest things that I've tried since I've come here is to get rid of the upper versus lower or the Volunteer versus Cherokee. There's healthy competition that goes on when we meet on a playing field. When we're not on a playing field, we're all educating Hawkins County students to be the best they can be after high schools. Whether they go to the career, the military, college, post-secondary opportunities abound and it's our job to make sure they're successful. One of those avenues is through sports. And I think if we offer sports, we ought to have the best facilities and the safest facilities for those students to use. Thank you very much.
Mr. Millers?
All right, I've got a couple of questions, maybe more than two. And first of all, I'm a little concerned at the time we're dealing with. We're dealing with the pandemic. We all know that. We all know we possibly have short file sharing. We're dealing with the pandemic. We all know that. We all know we possibly have shortfalls here and there. What happens if we find out we can have a football season? And we spent one million terms, we could have a golden football season. And have you gotten any of those supporters yet? Have you, like, actually pulled in any of those supporters yet? And why did it take so long for everybody to come into action? Apparently this field problem has been some time now. And I'm just concerned as to why this happened now, and it didn't happen a year back. And I know you've not been around very long, Matt, but I'm asking the parents also.
Well, I, I, I'd like to address them, and if, if I miss the mark, uh, somebody can correct me, but, um, Mrs. Goins, I, I. First question in reverse order. Um, we started this immediately after the football season this year because we weren't able to make. If you, if you remember the talks, um, in the fall, when it was deemed unsafe, we had to get a crew out there, uh, get it up the, up the speed. A lot of that was the drainage, because water sitting on that field in low spots where it wouldn't be drained off, the drains were clogged, they weren't evacuating the water. Sitting water on top of what Mr. Gibson described, rock underneath with the soil on top, is gonna cause a whole lot of issues. A lot of fitting, a lot of divots, a lot of uneven turf. Um, so we did start weather permitting as soon as we could this year, and that, that was all of that drain work. And that took tremendously amount, a, a, a long amount of time due to the rains that we had even this spring. Couple on fat, on top of that, the COVID closures. Uh, we, we closed and our staff were kept home for a period of time. That set us back. And, and again, none of these are excuses. It's just facts that we're dealing with. The timeline is unfortunate. It's not perfect timing. Perfect timing would have been that we were discussing this, uh, several months earlier. But we honestly had started a, a, a crew up there that were going to reseed, level, reseed, and fertilize that with the hopes to have it done, um, by the fall, because we were heading toward grass. And that was an, an internal effort. But again, the drainage, the, the inability to get on there and to finish that, open trenches, that all provided a stopping point for that work to continue. So that did lead to where we're at now, and, and we're taking action on it.
Another problem I have is the teacher phrases were kept completely out. And I feel this sends a signal that we're more interested in our football fields than we are in our teacher salaries. And being a parent of two teachers, I know how much they spend out of pocket every year. It's a lot.
To, to that end, I want to go on record to say that we do not prioritize sports over academics. We don't prioritize sports over teacher salaries and taking care of our, our staff. Um, at the last board meeting, when we sent our revised budget reflective of the minus-two percent that the governor had promised that was pulled back, basically a, a flat funded budget with the exception of step increases for teachers. So those moving up in years, uh, year increments off the salary schedule, or unit increments on college courses, those types of things, those are still moving forward. But as far as raises, raises across the board, we are not moving forward with that until we see our actuals from nineteen-twenty later this fall. And I did recommend to the board, our school board, that we would look at at least a one-time, uh, bonus or a pay structure, an informal, uh, temporary pay structure to reflect this year's, just to see what the state income and the state revenues look like. Because, uh, word on the street is that a lot of those state departments are being asked to cut. And if they're being asked to cut, that trickles down to our school systems across the state. And if that happens, we need to be prepared. To that end, um, you have not seen any teacher postings fly or be advertised on our website, because we are filling our vacancies through attrition with current staff. So we are moving, uh, teachers when there's openings. We're moving appropriate, uh, credential teachers to those openings in-house until we get to the point where we're at or below that BEP-funded, uh, formula for student-to-teacher ratio. Uh, to, to this point, we've saved ten positions, which equates to about a five hundred thousand dollar reduction in year-to-date, uh, salary expenses, uh, which will be reflected hopefully in the, in the upcoming year. So we're doing our part on the operational cost. Another elephant in the room is that we're trying to equalize spending across the system. And one of those, uh, one of those board actions is looking at, um, locally funded, uh, resources or schools that fall outside the BEP funding formula, and we are looking at closing two rural small schools. And that's not an easy decision either. But it's also a business decision, and like I started our conversation this evening, one of my jobs is to make sure that we're fiscally solvent and responsible with our tax rate money.
And that's my job as well.
Correct. And it is everybody's job here, and I don't minimize that. What I will say is that if it passes, what I would tell you is that it is, it is, the work's already started to make sure that through donations, advertisements, um, tax-free, uh, purchase of those materials, because we can purchase those directly, because we're a tax-free organization, we can get, we can save twenty-five to twenty-seven thousand dollars right off the top by direct purchase of those materials. So there's things we can do if this passes to minimize that burden. The board thought it was very, very safe to assume that we would not exceed one point two-five. We think that it's gonna come in far lower than that. And whatever we do spend, my goal would be to greatly reduce, if not zero out the cost for our, our local expenditure.
And what will our estimated, um, amount that we'll have to take out of fund balance to become in the year?
In the current budget before you, or that will be before you, it's estimated to four point two. Last year was three point three, the year before that was three point one. Now, actuals, what we pulled two years ago, we estimated three point one, and we drew seven hundred thousand dollars. So we overestimate our expenditures and underestimate our revenues so that we come in in a safe margin. Because I don't want to stand before my board or any of you and tell you that we blew our budget to pot. So we're gonna be very conservative with that budget.
And also, and I, as you can tell, I've thought about this for days. I think this has been, it's very important. Also, now, we're gonna, you're saying we do Cherokee, uh, Volunteer first, and then Cherokee down the road. We know that Cody keeps his field in immaculate condition.
Correct.
How many years down the road, and will that money be just left there until we use it, or how does that work?
The money you see before you would cover both projects. So our goal would be that is, i- immediately following the football season in twenty twenty-one, we would start work on Cherokee, assuming that we were able to complete Volunteers' on target this, this summer.
And I, this is probably a question from the Volunteer posters, maybe. Um, how much money would we lose if we don't have a football, home football season?
I can, I'm a Volunteer band treasurer, so I can tell you that off concessions alone, we make about three thousand to nine thousand dollars a year. We, we've already lost Fun Fest. That's ten to fifteen thousand dollars off of our budget. Um, it costs us about that much just to get on the field with the show. The music, the copyright, instruction, uniforms, flags, all of those things. We don't put on the shows with elaborate stuff like DVD. But we still do very well at competitions.
Okay, so total, how much would you save for season with all the ticket sales?
We don't get tickets.
That goes to the.
Only thing we do is, uh, parking and, uh, a little fapness thing, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's all we get.
And how much is that?
Oh, you've been, probably for, uh, five games, you're looking at a thousand dollars maybe.
Possibly could the kids do fundraisers to authorize extra money to pay for this and send back to the mortgage pension? Is that a possibility?
Fundraisers for this, the turf project?
Yes.
It, it, I mean, it, it is a possibility. You're, you're talking about an, uh, a very large amount of money. And I think that the, the efforts, that the Booster Club committees that, that represent both ends of the county, I think that work would be more beneficial toward that end because of that large amount of money. But we would look at everything to generate those funds. That's, I answered your question.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Gibson?
Yeah, Director Higginson, I've got a couple of questions, comments, whatever. First, uh, I don't know if you were up on Volunteers' field when Dr. Sample, as you see, uh, he's a turf grass expert. And, uh, you know what his ideal was? You know how much his estimate was? That you can fix Volunteers' fields versus putting this down, to get it in very good plank condition. Uh, you got a figure?
I don't have that figure, but it was significantly less than two hundred and forty thousand dollars that we had.
It was thirty-five thousand dollars, that's Dr. Sample, so you, the field would be fixed and in perfect condition for thirty-five thousand dollars.
That, that.
I don't know, I'm just, I'm just asking.
No, and I will clarify that, that, that was before our rain, and that was before the drain, uh, estimates were, were taken into consideration. That was just leveling the field and planting the sprigs and fertilizing appropriately for the upcoming, uh, fall season.
So if we did that, just for this year, to get us past what's going on in any county right now, uh, would that not buy us some time?
I don't, I don't think, in, in, in our estimates and talking to the contractors we've dealt with, I don't think we have enough time, given the condition of the field, for turning it back to grass. It's, it's a weed pit right now due to the, the digging up of those trenches for the, for the drains. Those are ready to be backfilled. We're ready to move forward with it. But, um, again, if the commission declines this, this evening, I will take every option back to my board, back to our board, and we will, we will work every option that we can. It's, it's our responsibility to do so.
The, another question I had, some of our commissioners had made, uh, comments, and, and I've said this before, it's always a question, that your money's your money. Uh, you know, y'all get your budget. It's your, you can do what you want to do with it. That'd be a correct statement?
That's correct. Once you tear mark for education, that's in our general fund or, and/or fund balance.
So if, if it's your money, I need you to explain to the public what we're looking at as commissioners. If we turn you down, why are you still not gonna do it since it's your money?
Because amendments based on board policy and state law do have to come before the fund body, uh, the funding body, and you are the funding body.
I understand that, that's why we probably know that.
We, we can take an action as far as the Board of Education, but we are responsible for bringing any amendment and any expenditure that deviates from an approved budget to the funding body for reapproval. That goes with a new budget at the start of the year. That goes for amendments during the course of the year, because there needs to be transparency and oversight. You guys represent that transparency and oversight.
Agreed. And, and the reason I asked the question is, uh, you know, and, and I'd like to know, if we did shoot it down, if it got turned down by the county commission, would you guys go ahead? Uh, I can't remember, uh, I really do not remember the, the elevator thing. Uh, but I think it was going down, it went and down. So would you guys go ahead if we shoot it down? Will you go ahead with the fields, the turf grass and the fields?
That's something I would take back to the board for a decision. I couldn't answer that question this evening. What I would say relative to the elevator discussion is that was an ADA compliance issue as well. And when you, when you deal with, when you deal with.
Also, with the, with the elevator, there was already money in that line item too. And so rather than doing other things that we had planned on doing, we did the elevator instead because it had to be done for ADA. So that's the only reason the elevator could go ahead and be done, is because there was already money in the line.
I'm just trying to make reference, I, I, you know, just making sure there, but I'm just making sure I want the public to be aware too, you know, uh, that, uh, it's not always on us. It's not a, always a county commission decision that prohibits or, uh, goes ahead or lags behind anything that the school does.
I agree.
Go ahead.
I, I, I think, I think your, uh, your determination is correct. Uh, unfortunately, we are going to, or fortunately, I think it is a good thing for transparency. I think it's a good thing for our public to know where we're at with our money. I think it's a good thing for them to hear what goes on with our funding body, um, our oversight body, and that is you guys as a commission. With that being said, I think that we need to, um, we will react responsibly no matter the decision before you. And I don't take the decision lightly. Uh, my board made a decision. I'm standing before you, uh, relaying that decision and trying to answer the questions with the best of my ability as to why they felt compassion to do so and make that decision.
I appreciate it. You've done a good job. From what I hear, what I know, I, 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 you did walk into this a couple of rainy seasons. You've been pretty bad, but, uh, one out here, for the pictures of your teachers and the, that work ethic, and everything, I guess, you've done an excellent job coming in. You've got, uh, the hard job done, which you're doing.
Commissioner Barrett, would you withdraw?
No, I still have, I've got some questions. Okay, uh, Commissioner Higginson. Uh, and this kind of goes along with, uh, these questions that Commissioner Goins has. Uh, you alluded, unless they've understood you correctly, about maybe having some, uh, corporate sponsors. Okay, um, kind of like Commissioner Goins. I would feel better if you had something on paper, okay? Uh, you know, economic climate, uh, you know, corporations may be subject to change of mind.
Uh, can I, can I just, not interrupt you, Mr. Barrett, but, uh, those that were approached last year were apprehensive to sign any kind of contract that Mr. Castle at the time was, uh, was, uh, you know, a promissory note, or, or if conditions are met, if the board takes action, I promise to donate X, whatever the case is. They were apprehensive to do so because the board hadn't taken action. Now that the board's taken action, they know that it is a serious decision that they prioritize and that they're willing to move forward to and put the money where it needs to be in order for that project to happen. That allows vendors and corporate sponsors to come along board and say, "I feel a lot better turning over my donation to the school system, because the board has dedicated those funds out of the reserve in order to pay for such a project." Now again, um, I know it's a lot of money, but my goal would be that if it's passed this evening to lessen, greatly lessen, or zero out the cost of the school system by way of those donations and those, and those, uh, sponsorships. With, but, but I do agree with your premise. I mean, it, it would make me feel a lot better, and I think it'd make everybody feel a lot better in the room if you had the money upfront. Unfortunately, big corporations aren't always likely to sign on the line unless they know that the board's serious about moving forward with something.
Along those lines with the, you know, the, the climate, the stuff, economic climate, none of the virus, things like that. Uh, you know, you're trying to predict the future. Uh, we aren't, you know, basically. But, okay, we're not even sure, basically, if school will start this fall. Now, if you, if you mix in social distance, and, and I don't know what school systems thought process is on this, but if you, if you go in with social distancing, and you're running transportation, and you're busing students, okay? School bus, let's say, helps seventy people. If you're, if you have to change that due to social distance, then you might potentially have to run two bus routes to pick up all the students. So you have the potential of having to double your transportation costs, wear and parry vehicles, uh, probably double the pay for the bus drivers, everything like that. So it's a, it's complicated mix. And we as commissioners, you know, we've got the purchase sheet facing us. We have, uh, we saw a prime example here tonight, uh, radio issues and EMS issues. You know, thank goodness, we, you know, had people here. But all of that, we, as commissioners, you know, we, we got to figure out what to do. It's, it's tough, it's tough, tough spot to be in.
Yes, sir. You, you, everything you stated is, is, is a factual concern that we're dealing with. Uh, first and foremost, we plan an opening, uh, as usual, first part of August. Uh, and we're rolling out a plan the week of July fourth. Uh, along those lines, we have contingencies if cases grow. If, when we get into the flu season, those numbers tend to spike or increase to the point where it's deemed unsafe. But we plan to open as usual, and part of that opening is being ready for sports that we can safely operate under the conditions that we hope to be in by the fall. We make plans on what if all the time, because we have to be prepared. Uh, we can stand in front of any governing body, any group meeting, and whiff ourselves to death, because there's so many factors, especially with the pandemic coming in, that we can't determine a, a narrow focus or path that we're going to go on no matter what, because we can't control those. I think the, the second thing is that the transportation concern is real. However, we've been surveying our, our parents. Uh, we, the, the last survey ended today, and over sixty percent of, of parents, because of concerns with busing. They do want schools open, but they are telling us that they are going to either have their students drive themselves or, um, or, or they're going to take their students through a carpool situation with siblings, so that they're safer in their home groups or whatever the case is, and not exposed to more than they need to be exposed to prior to getting to school. Sixty percent. Now, will that play out? To that sixty percent, I'm not sure, but we have gotten as much information to make informed and educated decisions in. but we have gotten as much information to make informed and educated decisions in that planning process as much as possible. If we had to double the routes, I can tell you right now, we couldn't do it. We have a hard time, uh, recruiting bus drivers, and we have a hundred percent full staff right now. But that doesn't mean that something could happen or that one of them gets sick, and we doubled illnesses at the start of this year, which were near the catastrophic for having to double up on runs as it was. If we had to meet those CDC guidelines, I think to which you're referring, I can tell you right now, we couldn't afford it or we couldn't meet those demands legitimately right now. And I don't know any school system that can in our region, because I'm on the phone with them every single week, and they're all saying the same thing. Green County, for example, Mr. McLean has said, we flat out couldn't do that if it got to that point, and I was right with him, we can't do that. Uh, so there needs to be contingencies. One of the acts that we're working on is the CARES Act, it was mentioned earlier, and that's one point six million for Hopkins County schools. One-time funds for twenty-seven months that we have to dedicate a plan to. We have to dedicate a plan for opening, a plan for contingency should we have to scale back, and a plan for if we have to close. Large portion of that money is making sure that every single student, including those in this room, have a Chromebook, in this case, to take home, that they can stream lessons, stream their teacher's lessons to, and get the same type of instruction in their home. Is that the best case scenario? Absolutely not. We want students in school, in front of teachers, working with their hands, working with the teachers, learning directly from them. But we would be stupid if we didn't make those plans and contingencies according to what we think may happen. And when we get one-time dollars, we're going to maximize those to benefit us well in the future, not just this year.
Commissioner Cox?
I've got a grandson that's going to be up there volunteering in a year or so, and I don't know if he's going to play football or not. He has in the past. I'm not a great fan of football. I think it's a dangerous sport, and I, I certainly don't even carry a grandson to play. However, uh, if, as Mr. Gibson said, if you guys got the money and the budget, there's no due money, I can be persuaded to vote for it. However, uh, tell me why. I'm going to ask you two or three questions.
Okay.
Why, why are you putting in turf over grass? And I've heard from the teachers about the condition of the field. Can it be done in the fall? And, uh, I guess the final question is, and it's not the concern with the football field, uh, why do all the teachers keep telling me that, that education, uh, doesn't have as many as the vast supplies and there has stand up to three to four hundred dollar a year for supply for the classroom?
Each, each school site is given enough money to operate. Now that, I would have to get some details after the meeting from it perhaps, and find out what classroom zones are and what school sites are affected, but every school site is given a budget for operational costs, and that includes classroom supplies. Now, teachers do go above and beyond. Uh, teachers are naturally overachievers by nature, and that's why they're in a classroom. So they do come up with additional activities, additional resources they want to expose their students to, and in those cases, there may be some additional costs that aren't covered by the school site. But the school site budgets are there for that specific purpose. I, again, if, if we can talk privately, I'd, I'd be happy to track down that information for you. Why turf? Turf is seen as an investment, uh, for the long term. Um, as you heard Coach State earlier, um, it is a lot of maintenance. This gentleman to my left works extremely hard, and he and his staff do, as do volunteers. I was up there volunteering a, a week and a half ago, and following their morning practice, they were on mowers. Mr. Ball was on, uh, uh, and our, our coaches are on mowers and working those fields and striping and doing whatever they can if those, if those fields are grassed. Turf removes a lot of the maintenance costs. Seven thousand dollars on, on average for striking paint a year. Um, that, that's a figure that I've been given from, from both sites. Um, time and effort in mowing, watering during the summer, water bill is, is next to nothing if you don't turf. Because unlike California, where I originally came from, you don't have to water turf. You have to water turf out there because it gets a hundred and ten degrees. You have to cool that down to plain temperature, ambient temperature, for those students to survive and stay healthy out there. Advances in turf, uh, Mr. Gibson is absolutely correct. Several years ago, there was a hot debate on which is safer. It's widely, um, viewed as neutral or more leaning towards safer on the turf side now because of the synthetic materials they underline the turf with and the materials they're building the turf with these days as far as cushioning and as far as that, that material staying put like natural grass does. I'm not an expert in that. All I can do is refer to the resources and the articles that are written and the scientists that do that work, but it's seen as a long-term investment, so why turf? If we invest in something that's going to last ten years and reduce our maintenance costs each year annually, and we're able to set aside fifty thousand dollars that we typically run for sports field maintenance right now each year, by the end of ten years, we have five hundred thousand dollars, and on average, it costs about a hundred, a hundred and fifty to replace turf once the, uh, preliminary work is done. So initially, it's a large expense, but it's an investment in what we can do long-term if done the right way. Third question was if we can get volunteers ready in time. The contractor we have ready to be lined up is on a Sourcewell contract. Uh, states that he can get that done prior to the start of the, of the season. Worst case, if we get some more monsoons or rain weather type events and that delays it, we would be looking at some home games maybe played at the middle school to start the year, but we would have the bulk of the season in four terms. So it is believed that we could have it ready.
I, I'm just worried that most, uh, most baseball stadiums have went back to grass.
And, uh, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot of athletes and teams that just like grass. Um, if you get into the major leagues, uh, people like it, especially the purists in baseball. They like, they like the, the way the ball plays off the grass. It just depends on who you talk to.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let me remind, I mean, let's, let's, just make sure our questions are pertaining to this turf, and, you know, I mean, Director Diggs is on, he's, he's, he's lax for any of the questions we have about anything else some other time. This meeting is getting, getting very empty, and we need to make sure that we're directing our questions toward the turf. And I would like to, uh, relinquish my chair to determine protein. Mr. Barrett, and I'd like to speak on this issue.
Uh, yeah, the, uh, some of the questions I had have already been asked. And I'm for one hundred percent children that are in school, grown up, high school, whatever, having a good play, field to play on. The tolls that I got, I got one that is all for it, the rest was opposed to it. The biggest reason why I sent it was because of the money that's being spent. Both schools in Cherokee at present time does not need, they've got a good field. Another thing was, uh, at the end of this next fiscal year, those people reminded me that as far as they knew, two schools probably are going to be closed down in order to save money. Then you come along now, spending this money for turf, spending on those students, don't leave. That's the question I had.
Okay, fair enough, and I, and I received those same questions, Mr. Thacker. I would say that, that, uh, Cherokee doesn't need it right now. You're absolutely right. That's a factual statement from whoever you, you got a, a call from. It's a factual statement now, you've heard directly from the coach. I think that, uh, I think that what, what we're looking at is an investment, like I said, to, to Mr. Thacker a couple minutes, I'm sorry, Mr. Clance a couple minutes ago, and that is that it's an investment in the long-term savings that we realize year after year.
What about the bids?
That it's a Sourcewell contract, which, which, which prevents us from having bid it out because it meets the criteria in the state rubric for meeting those minimum, uh, minimum price points and quality concerns that, that need to be universalized across the board. Closing schools is not an easy decision. Um, if, if it were up to me, and I've said this publicly at my own board meetings, we'd keep those open. If we could afford to keep those open long-term, we would keep those open. I graduated from a high school that had less than ninety students. I see the value in small school education and what it means in relationships with students, teachers, and the communities that they serve. We have to make business decisions, whether it's right or wrong, or fair, or, um, or, or deemed, um, right at the time. We also have a business to run because we use taxpayer money in order to prepare our kids for their futures. Um, this investment would be used at Cherokee as well as Volunteer because of those ongoing costs. Operational costs are saved when you close two schools that are serving a hundred and sixty, a hundred and sixty-five students between the two of them and paying for ninety percent of those salaries outside of, outside of the BEP funded formula. Those ongoing costs can then be worked back into the system to benefit all teachers across the board and consequently, all students across the board, and not just pocketed here and there. Same thing goes for our sports. If we put the initial investment upfront, we save those initial, those ongoing maintenance costs, and we set aside a fund of at least fifty thousand dollars a year, which I recommended when this motion was passed, we have enough to then replace that every ten years on average when it, when it needs to be replaced, and we have cash on hand to do so, so therefore, you're eliminating all those maintenance costs over the decade.
Well, we all know that this is going to bend your budget.
It is.
And we also know that, you know, this, you had this money, so, you know, we know that you can spend it. That's not wrong.
I, it's. And I, and I don't want to put any of that, it, it's, it's not my intent or the Board of Education's intent to put anybody on the spot. And, and I know the predicament that this puts you in because of the transparency that our community demands, and I think is good for our community. We have to be transparent in how we expend our, our dollars. We feel that it has to come up here because it's an amendment of one point two five to the current year budget that you guys did not pass prior to the amendment being made. That's why we feel like it has to come forward.
Mr. Thackey, have you any more questions?
No.
Uh, Commissioner Barker, I think you're next.
Yeah, man, I've just got a couple of questions. I know that we've talked several times about drainage being an issue, and you think you've got that problem. I guess the thing that concerns me is, uh, if, like Mr. Gibson said, that it's been established that there's caverns underneath it. Have y'all corriged real, and what's going to assure us that this is not, you know, we're going to spend this money on turf and then it's not going to sink, just like the field is, so.
There's, there's no promise that once they take the first couple layers of dirt and, and fill off of that field that they're not going to run into issues, but with the studies that were done and with the work that was done from UT, it was largely believed that we could re-level that, cede it, and if had, if we had the time to return it to, to, uh, natural turf. With that same rationale being, being used, and with the studies being done right now, we feel like the turf would provide, um, the amount of work that they have to do for the base and then the subsequent overfill would rectify those situations, but I'm not going to make any promises because there are some weird things that happen underneath the ground of volunteer.
That's, that's kind of my concern, is, you know, what's, what's the contingency plan if, if, if that happens? And it's my understanding that the guy from UT did a visual, they didn't really do any engineering work or anything?
This soil.
Do you not think that that should be done before you go to that expense?
Part of what the contractor would do if this was passed is when they strip that down, is they look at and determine the needs of the base material, and that would include voids, rock layers, um, the amount of sandy, soft dirt that could collapse, that type of stuff, prior to putting fill on top. So that, that would be done as part of the process, and they build that cushion in when they give us those bids according to what the vendor has told us.
So what's your contingency plan if it's not settled?
So our contingency plan is that if we're able to go back to school, we have a football season, and for whatever reason that football field is not ready, I have spoken to the middle school, and we will be working with the middle school to arrange for some home games to be played there so that we can have some regional, local representation for home games and still allow for some fundraising. Um, it's not the best. I know, I know our, our parents and our students wouldn't want that, but we, our obligation is if we offer the sport, to offer a playing field, and that's our obligation, and make sure that that playing field is safe.
And then, I guess my other question, I've asked you this before. Um, who, who's going to be accountable to make sure that once this is all done, that it's maintained the way it should be maintained? Who's going to do the training for that? Because, I mean, if, if you don't maintain it, it's going to be back in the same position.
The, the contractor that puts the turf in does a professional development for our coaching staff and our athletic directors at each school site where it's installed. And they show the credit maintenance, how often they create a schedule with us that's made known to the central office as well as each school site, and those are checked, uh, both by maintenance staff as well as central office and school site staff to make sure that those are accountable.
Okay, and then when staff changes, who's going to do that contingency?
That's ongoing at the school site. That's an expectation of the administration at both schools.
Okay, uh, no more questions. Commissioner Barker?
No, I'm finished.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Ruth?
Thank you, Commissioner Barrett. I feel it's important that I need to speak, that's why I relinquished the chair. I would like to recognize again each and every football player from Volunteer this year tonight. If you just stand or if you're standing, raise your hand.
They're out in the hall too.
You got, you got the girl soccer team here too, Barbara.
And the, and the soccer.
And the band.
All right, I, and, and, okay, that's, that's, and I, I didn't mean to overlook anybody. But listen, this is, this is my point. If you vote no on this resolution tonight, you're saying, hey, kids, you all don't matter no more.
Thank you.
You don't matter. The contingency plan is to play at a middle school field. These seniors, I know, I can remember, and it's been a long time, but they're looking forward to their senior season. And I, senior season, I know that they want to play on their home field. And, you know, I asked this commissioner tonight, you know, it's not, if, if you, if you're worried about taking the heat, I mean, the board's done stepped up, the school board's done stepped up and said, you know, we're going to do this. And all we're doing is just to prove the amendment. And I, everybody that's called me that's been against this, I told them, you need to talk to your school board member. And we promise, I promise you that probably, and I'm, you know, Judge Ross, he's taking a big hand into the fundraising and the boosters right now. And I think Matt's right, when everything's said and done, the taxpayer won't have to foot any of this. I think that the money can be raised for this, but this is the thing about it, we cannot wait. If we don't do something now, then the fields are not, the field volunteers not going to be ready to play on or whatever. And I, I strongly support this amendment, and we need to step up and do the right thing.
Okay, I believe the board is clear as far as questions, things like that. So, I guess this time I will turn it back over to Commissioner Ruth.
You got carried out.
I'm getting carried out. Okay, all right, uh, I guess we're ready to vote?
Chairman Barrett, we'll be doing this by voice, uh, because we didn't have a way to say this on the, so that, because they pulled it out, so we'll be doing it by voice.
Okay, the, the voice vote, uh, the yes votes will be for?
For an amendment.
The B for, okay, I'm getting myself myself out. Okay, will be for the amendment.
For the resolution.
Before they pull this one out.
Before they pulled it out, okay, so.
Yes, we score more rate.
Resolution is twelve days, and it's solely for account number seventy-six, one hundred, oh, seven, and thirty-nine boundaries. Just those two line items within that.
The regular, regular capital outlet.
Okay, so yes votes is to approve the, approve the mint, the button, the mint. Okay. All right, is everybody steering around it? Because I'm not sure I'm sure to say it. Okay, Commissioner, would you, would you repeat that right there? Please.
If you are support, if you're supportive of turf, you're voting yes and support of turf at the two fields. If you disagree and do not want that budget amendment to go through, for them to reallocate those funds, then you vote no.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, everybody ready to vote? All right, Secretary Paul Roach.
Mr. Danny Alvis?
This is the turf, I'll tell you. This, yes.
Thank you. Nancy Barker?
Yes.
Jeff Barrett?
No.
Rick Brewer?
Yes.
George Bridwell?
Yes.
Larry Clance?
Yes.
Linda Davis?
Yes.
Mark Dewitt?
Yes.
Bob Edens? Is that yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Dawson Fields?
No.
Kate Gibson?
Yes.
Valerie Goins?
Sorry, but no.
Mr. Harrell?
No.
Charles Houseright?
No.
Raymond Jesse?
Yes.
Tom Kern?
Yes.
John Vance?
Yes.
Hannah Spieth? No, no, I'm sorry, hit nothing. Donnie Tally?
No.
Charles Thacker?
No.
Sybil Trent?
Yes.
Thirteen yes?
Yes.
Okay, this time I'll turn the page back over to Commissioner Bruce.
Right, uh, next resolution is twenty twenty zero six one three introduced by Commissioner Mills. We're wishing to reference the central cafeteria funding budget amendment to secure when I saw my. Most by Commissioner Mills, second by Mr. Dewitt. Now, is there any discussion?
Look, guys.
If not, I think everybody can cast their vote.
Mr. Houseright?
Yes.
Mr. Edens? Thank you. Mr. Kern, Rick Wood, and Clance, they both placed. Twenty-one yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is twenty twenty zero six one four introduced by Commissioner Mills. School transportation and funding budget amendment, Mr. Chairman, I so move. Motion by Commissioner Mills, second by Commissioner Fields, is there any discussion? Now, if everyone can cast their vote.
Mr. Houseright? Mr. Edens? Thank you. Twenty-one yes.
Right. If motion carries, uh, I got a question before we do the note reading. Do we want recess for about five minutes?
No.
Is that a no? Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is note reading, Commissioner Fields.
Approval letter public. Regina Dyer, per address. Self-employed, Mark Morseburg, Tennessee. Stephen C. Fraser, per address. Self-employed, Kingsport, Tennessee. Sheila C. Lutz, per address. Kingsport, Crest Creek, Union Rogersville, Tennessee. Stacy Mays, per address. City of Churchill, Churchill, Tennessee. Rebecca Parker, per address. Rogersville Housing Authority, Rogersville, Tennessee. William Phillips, per address. Phillips and Hill, Rogersville, Tennessee. Amy L. Schreiner, per address. Hunter Smith and Davis, L O P, Kingsport, Tennessee. Elaine M. S. Sims, per address. Uh, Captain's Bookkeeping Services, Essonne, Tennessee. Vicky L. Skelton, per address. City of Churchill, Churchill, Tennessee. Joseph Slama, per address. Walt, Wally, Wally Wood, L L C, Morseburg, Tennessee. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Fields, second by Commissioner Harrell, is there any discussion? Knock, cast your vote.
Mr. Houseright? Mr. Edens? Twenty-one yes.
Mr. Chairman, motion to suspend the rule with consideration of resolution.
How would we refuse one? Second.
Mr. Harrell, did you say?
Yes, I did.
Motion by Commissioner Mills to suspend the rule, second by Commissioner Dewitt. I don't think there's any discussion on that. We just, we just want to get a vote. Yep, we, we got a vote on that. Motion to suspend the rules, cast your vote. Yes, to suspend, no, is to.
Resolution.
Just for resolution.
Suspend the resolution, out of order resolution number one. Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Houseright? This is a motion to suspend the rules for out-of-order resolution number one, which, uh, is to restore the continued radio communications contract with A M K Services for emergency communications throughout Hawkins County, Tennessee. You or Commissioner Edens do not have a copy of that because it came around late Friday afternoon. Uh, but one of the commissioners will be reading that. So this is a motion to suspend the rule to hear that resolution. Thank you. Commissioner Edens? Thank you.
We, we can give him an opportunity to change the rule.
I would like to change it.
I'm sorry.
Did you go, did he ask, uh, did he tell me to change it? We need to know what it is for. So there's eighteen yes and three no.
The motion to suspend the rules fails. Mr. Chairman, motion for consideration of out-of-order resolution two. That's to suspend the rules. Motion to suspend the rules by Commissioner Mills for consideration of out-of-order resolution number two.
For those that are present on this meeting, since they did not have copies of these, they probably need to let them know what they want.
And head it, go ahead and read it. That's, uh, Commissioner Fields' resolution. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Fields, I'm sorry. It's that, you wanna just read the topic on, so, Commissioner Reed, Commissioner Houseright, that's what we're talking about?
Yeah, uh, Commissioner Reed and Commissioner Houseright, we're, the, uh, out-of-order resolution, the EMS contract, uh, was up the last day of this month, uh, June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Uh, and it was, uh, my understanding, we had last year in June, we had, uh, extended it until September, and I looked at it wrong. Uh, I was thinking it wasn't due September, but it was due this month. And we had put out of order resolution in to let them extend for three years for a thirty-six month period, instead of twelve month period. Uh, that's what the resolution states. They've had the contract, uh, uh, looks like to July twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen, when we started doing all this. Anyway, you, you guys understand that?
Any questions, Commissioner Edens or Commissioner Houseright? Okay, motion by Commissioner Mills, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dewitt. If everyone cast their vote to suspend the rules.
Mr. Edens and Houseright, this is a motion to suspend rules. Commissioner Houseright?
Yes.
Mr. Edens?
Yes.
Twenty-one yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended. Commissioner Fields, you wanna read your out-of-order resolution, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution in reference approval of a three-year exclusive franchise rights to Hawkins County Emergency Medical Service for the operation of ground and convalescent ambulance services for Hawkins County, Tennessee. Whereas on July twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen, Hawkins County Board of Commission approved revolution, resolution two thousand sixteen oh seven oh three, granting exclusive franchise rights for the operation of ground and convalescent ambulance services to Hawkins County Emergency Medical Service for a period of three years, uh, within expiration of June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. And whereas the following resolution have been approved, resolutions have been approved by the Hawkins County Board of Commissions for ambulance services in Hawkins County on July twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen, uh, number two sixteen, two oh sixteen oh seven oh three, September twenty-sixth, two thousand sixteen, resolution two oh sixteen oh nine oh seven, April twenty-two, two nineteen, uh, two thousand nineteen, resolution two oh nineteen oh four oh two, out of order, May twenty, two thousand nineteen, resolution two thousand nineteen oh five oh four. Whereas on June seventeen, twenty twenty, the Public Safety Committee approved a three-year extension of exclusive franchise rights to Hawkins County Emergency Medical Service for the operation of ground and convalescent ambulance services for Hawkins County, Tennessee, on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Therefore, be resolved that Hawkins County Board of Commissions grants extension of the current franchise rights to Hawkins County Emergency Medical Service for a period of three years to expire midnight, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Fields, second by Commissioner Harrell, is there any discussion? If not, cast your vote.
Commissioner Houseright?
Yes.
Edens? Thank you. Twenty-one yes.
Motion carries. Before we entertain a motion to adjourn, I'd like to apologize to Commissioner Sybil, Long Trent. I just discovered a piece of information in front of me that I overlooked. Would you please to address the commission on anything about that?
That's about time, didn't it?
Yeah, it's about the road?
No, that can be, that's when I get a little bit.
I, I just now realized. Okay, is there anything else, Mr. Chairman?
I'd like to put a record, uh, off an apology to, to the chair for asking a question or prediction that wasn't germane to the issue.
All right. I'm, I, you're, you're perfectly okay. I, I, and if I found you like I was a stroke to you, I'm falling out. No, I didn't say that. Motion by Commissioner Mills. Adjourn, second by Commissioner Fields. All everybody please vote.